Um, uh, Mr. Toth, you feel up to it?
Sure.
All right, would you give us an invocation, please, sir?
Dear gracious heavenly Father, thank you for this time of meeting these minds together, public, private, and abroad across this state and across America, Lord. We ask you to help us make the right decisions and guide us. And thank you, Jesus, for our many, many blessings. In your name we ask and pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Toth. We rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank y'all for that. All right, I need a motion to prove the agenda unless there's any amendments, uh, Mr. Bowen, aboard members.
No amendments on my end.
Okay. All right, can I get a second?
A second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any disapprove, okay. Uh, agenda is approved, I almost said the budget, did she hear that?
Yeah.
All right, school surplus property for the town of Crew.
Um, Mr. Chairman and Board, if you just look real quick, I think Mr. Mr. Ingram had mentioned this when he said he first voted for this, but I just let you know, um, this is something I gotta get done because people are asking me, you know, the board has been asking me a little bit about what are we doing with the landing crew? Has Lee Simmons done anything with it? That is, I call it the old annex building. The resolution you look in front of you and what's highlighted, it's, um, it says parcel one eighteen A thirty, three oh seven E forty-nine. In the Notaway database, the parcel is actually forty nine, the same number, but with forty-nine A. A as in apple at the end. Um, therefore, we have got to get, um, you'll see the documentation that we have reached out to the superintendent of schools. We have got to get them to do another resolution, Mr. Elder, and of course, I see Catherine Douglas here tonight. That has to, it has to match with the deed status. So, um, that is one of the holdups. So, that, that has, that land has not technically been transferred yet until we get that resolution straight. So, that is one of the holdups. And I just want to share that with the board, and I know it, you know, when they have them, I don't even know if it's on their agenda or not, but anyway, that has to be rectified.
I think they're meeting tonight.
Okay.
Does it have any utilities or anything, any water, or anybody been over to check on it?
Uh, I think everything's turned off, but yeah, all the power and everything's turned off. It's got, it's got, uh, the windows are, um, most of them are boarded up, um, but it's water on the property that's turned off. And I don't, I'm not, I went up there and looked at it, I don't remember seeing any power at all going to the building, but anyway, I'll double check it.
Okay. All right, anything of four members on that? All right, we're gonna move on to, uh, emergency services, uh, specifically, uh, retaining to dispatch. Uh, Mr. Bowen, do you wanna take?
Yeah, I can start off. Mr. Uh, Mr. Chairman, Board members, um, I just titled it emergency services because, uh, because we might get into some broad discussions. We've gotten some, um, it had gotten some complaints from, um, our volunteers and others, the Notaway Emergency Squad, about some of the mistakes made during the dispatching. Uh, Mr. Josh Havens has been, is the supervisor of the Sheriff's Department. He's supervisor for that, uh, group, and he's been trying to, um, uh, try to make some improvements. And I think some of the, um, some of the people that you see here, to the volunteers from the Crew, uh, Crew, Burkeville, and Blackstone Fire Department, which was the Emergency Squad, um, they may want to have some discussions with the board, and I know that's something we normally don't do in work sessions, but I understand also, um, that we're dealing with the public safety situation. But that's gonna be totally up to board, what do y'all want to do with that?
Okay, now, um, just so we go and get started, a few months back, we created the ad hoc committee, which was Mr. Toth and myself.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
And, um, uh, we had some one-on-one discussions with some of the departments here. Ms. Norton and myself met with, uh, Crew Fire Department, uh, Monday night. And I know Bo and myself has been flooded with calls, um, lots of concerns, and, um, at, at this point, um, Mr. Toth, do you still feel, um, I mean, because we all have the right to change our mind anytime, given new information.
I change my mind seven times a day, no matter what.
That's right. Um, how do, how do you feel about the recommendation from what the ad hoc committee has become to the, uh, for the board?
I'm still for the recommendation.
Okay.
And that recommendation being?
To have Emergency Services Dispatch moved over to Mr. Hyde, um, under the, uh, supervision of him. Mr. Toth and I, like I said, we've had multiple conversations. Mr. Hyde is ready and willing for this. My, my biggest concern is, it's, uh, I don't know how to say it, but it's, since I got here in twenty twenty, and some of y'all were there the other night when we had this conversation. Early on, Mr. Tomer, myself, in twenty twenty, had some conversations about this. Chief Shute and I have had conversations about this. Police officers from multiple departments, and I'll just leave it like that, had concerns about it. And clearly, um, I've had conversations with, uh, Val early on, uh, with Ron and Jay now, and it does not seem to be getting any better. It actually seems to be escalating to the point where there is serious safety concerns, not only for the citizens, but for the officers and responders themselves. Therefore, I stand on my recommendation with Mr. Toth to have this move over, and our recommendation is to the board here. What we, what we choose to do with that, we have to do as a whole at least three votes.
And I'll also add this, it's nothing against, uh, Deputy Havens, Robert Jones, our sheriff. And I wanna say that in order for us to do it, in my opinion, I feel like the sheriff needs to grant his blessings upon us taking it.
I agree.
Because then it looks like we're forceful doing something, and I really think at the, at the end of the day, it's gonna help the sheriff out a lot. It's gonna help his department out a lot. Some adjacent counties has been doing it for a very long time, and I, I think it will help the sheriff. But I want the sheriff to say, all right, Notaway, it's gonna help me out some, it's gonna at least get people off your back. Now, each and every one of us can make a mistake.
That's right.
I don't wanna sit back up here and say, I told y'all it could get worse, because it can get worse. You know, it, it, some, certain things can get worse, but it's been going on. And I will say this, I don't want the county to have any more tools than what the sheriff had. Because if the county has more tools than what the sheriff had, he ain't getting a fast shake at the game. And, uh, and I respect the sheriff, he's a constitutional officer, he was elected just like each and every one of us was. But to get these calls and see stuff on Facebook and, and hear people holling for us as a county board to help them, and for us to set on our hands and not do anything, isn't fair to the citizens of the, of Notaway County.
And, and I'll go a little bit further with that too, Bo, because someone made a really good point to me, and it's, uh, they said, look what y'all have done for the animals in Notaway County. They said, look what y'all done for the hunters to be able to use dogs in Notaway County. But we're thumbing our nose at the people who are keeping our citizens safe as if, and I mean, all the subject matter experts, not us. And, uh, I mean, I wrote in some ambulances before, both willingly and unwillingly, but, um, it's, uh, I have no idea to the extent of the knowledge that y'all have. And, uh, first of all, I wanna thank each and every one of y'all, and, and I mean, I, I think I can speak for the entire board with this. God bless you. If it weren't for y'all, I don't think the citizens understand where that tax rate would be if we had full paid fire departments right now. It would be out the roof right now. And when the volunteers are gone, your tax rates will be looking more like Chesterfield and Henrico areas and stuff like that, when these, when these volunteers are no longer willing or able to do it. And I also don't see how we can encourage volunteers to come spend their time when the ones that have been here for years are beating their heads against the wall. It is a, is a deterrent for volunteers to join us. And, um, I mean, I'm with y'all, I hope we can find a peaceful resolution of this, and I think sooner rather than later. And that, that's where I'm at. Any of you other board members?
Yeah, I, I just wanna say, I put a little thing in the paper, but it wasn't enough. I cannot thank y'all enough for what y'all did when our house burned up. I cannot thank you enough. I just, I got over there and I saw Crew, I saw Blackstone, I saw Burkeville, I saw the Emergency Squad, then I saw Cambridge, then I saw Victoria, and I'm thinking to myself, these people got up out of their beds, this fire started at twelve-thirty in the morning. These people got up out of their beds, and I came over there in my truck, and I was just, trucks coming in, going out, and thank goodness the squad was there to get my brother to the hospital, and I just cannot thank y'all enough. Nobody knows what you people do. I found out that night, a lot of what y'all do. And I can tell you this, I appreciate it from the bottom of my heart, my family does also, and I wanna just say thank you. And anything I can do to make things better for y'all, I'm gonna do it.
Thank you, Ms. Dale.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate that. Uh, Ms. Norton, you got anything?
I had the pleasure of meeting with Mr. Basinger and Ms. Sniff, but I've talked to quite a few of y'all. We understand the complications of this with the sheriff being a constitutional officer, but at the end of the day, the sheriff and this board are stead with the health, safety, and welfare of this community. And I have never in my life, living here, seen this room full of these subject matter experts other than if they needed some money or fund it. When, and it wasn't in a bad way, but you only come when you really need something. You carry your own weight, every one of you. And when you come to us with a problem, we called it when I worked at DMA, situational awareness. We are aware of the situation, and we have to do something about it. No disrespect to any one department, we've gotta make it better so we can fix it, so you aren't in harm's way. And we've given ample opportunity for corrective measures, but we think this is the best recommendation, and it's not out of disrespect, we want to keep us working together. Because we're getting ready to spend almost seven million dollars on a radio communication system to help make us better. And I'll tell you what I told my church when we added a six-hundred-thousand-dollar building. We have a million-dollar facility, we can't clean it with a dollar general broom. We cannot install this facility and not have competent people behind that system. And I'm not saying they're not competent, these are good people. They're in a push-to-head-against-the-wall situation many times, but there's things we can do to make it better. And I believe Mr. Hyde has the expertise to be able to move us in the right direction.
Okay, Ms. Collins?
I've, I've, uh, talked to a lot of people over the last ten days, because I, unlike, uh, Mr. Toth, Mr. Rourke, I hadn't, hadn't gotten many phone calls from anybody. So, I took it upon myself every time I saw one of you or I saw a police officer over the last ten days, I asked. And I didn't get any positive answers. So, that tells me that this is not being looked at, and I, I hope that it will be. I also need to remind you, this needs to be done slowly, correctly. Where is it? What's it look like? Who, you know, is there some of you all involved in, in setting it up? Or maybe some reviews of, of activities or actions that happen so that we can educate these folks? So, we can prevent, you know, the same mistake twice or three times. I too have ridden in rescue squads, uh, not voluntarily.
Same here.
I appreciate what you do. My last one was Bee's, I was on a tractor, and I had to pass down the floor, so my wife called, and they took me, took care of me. So, I appreciate, appreciate everything you do.
I bet you were stinging mad too, on that.
I was stinging mad.
Hey, I see a social media, uh, person that voiced his opinion a whole lot on social media about this, and he's not here. So, hopefully, he's watching and hearing my comment.
Uh, Mr. Collins, you brought up a good point. Um, it just, it, as this thing moves forward, um, and I would defer, I have two things I think that we really need to come out here. Number one, if there's any clarification from, uh, Catherine that y'all may need, um, I don't wanna speak for you, but as I understand it, that, um, we do have the, we do have the authority to do it, it's just how we proceed with it.
I just wanna make sure that if there is, there is a ability, you have the ability as a board to transfer the dispatches.
Okay.
For emergency personnel. It's just about figuring out the best way to do it, and...
Catherine, excuse me, do you, do you mind?
I'm Catherine Douglas. Can everybody hear, is that better?
Yes, ma'am.
Catherine Douglas, county attorney with Gary Elder. So, you guys as the board, you have the authority to change who dispatch reports to essentially, and it is your duty to set up a communications officer. So, the only question that really needs to be determined, and Gary and I are looking into this, is the best and legal way to go about it, just so we go by the book, we go by the law. And, um, that's what we're looking into now for you guys, if it, if you choose to move forward.
Looking to the comp board positions also, whether they are considered county employees or whether they are sheriffs.
Comp board employees.
Right. Five of them on dispatch.
There are five on the, on dispatch. They are, they should be county employees. Is that, was that your question?
That's my question, yes.
Yes.
When they, so I've learned a lot of history the last ten days. So, when we had a jail, our jailers were our dispatches. And when they formed a regional jail, Richmond gave Notaway County five comp positions to replace those that we lost when the jailers left and went to Peacock.
Okay.
So, that's those five positions. That's not a common thing from my understanding, each county doesn't have five comp.
Well, that's certainly something we can look at. To be honest, I did not know that history.
Okay.
Um, typically, dispatch employees are employees of the county.
Okay.
But I'm happy to look into that further and have further conversation with y'all about that.
Let's understand what the cost of doing this is.
Absolutely.
There's a, and also there's five comp board positions, there was some discussion that they may be administrative and required to be with the sheriff, so if we can get that clarification on that as well.
Okay, yeah, we can look at that as well.
My understanding, Mr. Chairman and Board, the, uh, comp board positions are assigned to constitutional officers, not county administrators. We don't, in our office, we don't have any comp board positions, so...
But if the, if the sheriff is obliged, you're right, if he obliges us on this and, and goes along with it, then it, it really wouldn't make any difference.
As long as he's got those people available twenty-four hours a day for the paperwork transfer, like if someone gets stopped in Tennessee or something like that, and they need...
That would remain the same as far as I can tell.
Mm-hmm. So, so, Mr. Chairman, I should have started off with that, the sheriff could not be here tonight. They're actually having their, um, Christmas celebration for their department, so, um, I think that, um, you know, he would, he would as, it's not, he's ignoring this situation at all. So, I just wanted the public to know that.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, can, if she's finished, can I interject? The two comp board funds still come funnel, funnel through the, the county. The treasurer accepts the revenue and all that, and we track it. It's just not county money, it's encumbered as comp board money, which goes to the sheriff's office. But we also, the county does have to pay a portion of that expense. So, if he were not to relinquish that money, we would have to find the funds.
Right. The other part of this that I was talking about was, is, uh, the very short, to the point, brief, Buddy Hyde. And you know, and you know I'm only, I love you, brother. But, um, to the point, what Mr. Collins was saying, um, as far as oversight on this, um, getting the process started, getting close to implementation and stuff like that, um, to Mr. Collins' point, would, would you want the board to assign a committee, uh, for oversight on this, to help you along with this, um, just to kinda ease it? Yes, sir, come on up. Even if you decide you wanted to make an oversight committee of members of yourself or, or any of the members from, uh, departments or anything like that, and, or do you want supervisors there? Just tell us what you need also to kinda meet a Mr. Collins' point here for supervision of this.
Right, first of all, I appreciate your confidence in me, I really do, means a lot. I won't disappoint you, but it's always a team effort, and like I'd mentioned to you in a couple of meetings, what I'd like to ask the board to allow me to do, because I've, I've done very similar projects before on a county level, and it's, it's always good to have a stakeholder's team, a group. And what I'd like to do is be able to pick that, pick those players, because there are several different disciplines within, you know, the public safety with the emergency services, having, make sure everybody's represented, and you know, Mr. Basinger said it best the other night, you know, giving everybody a fair shake at, at the table, um, but also building it out. And then, I think in the meantime, what I could do is work with you or Mr. Bowen to pick up to two, because of the magic number of two.
Right.
Is have two of you, you know, in and out on it, or all the time on it, but at least have that interaction with us.
Right.
So, certainly, I think county representation, yes.
Well, how about this, with board, if y'all, if y'all okay with this, let, if y'all wanna let him get his team in place on that backside of it, and then whether it's in January, at, at that point, um, the next chairman can...
Right.
Assign two members or if, if, and nobody would take it personal if you said, I would like to have this one or this one. Nobody would take that personal, just, you know, um, but, but have that conversation with, with Steve and the chairman.
Well, I'm a non-biased kind of person, and I think, you know, not being that I'm not a member of any of the departments, but I support the departments, is, um, I would keep it as evenly as possible across the board. And then we also have, I've got some contacts out in South Side, Virginia, and different places in the Commonwealth that have actually been involved in these transitions. So, you know, this is not something that's strange to us, but certainly, you know, you always wanna hear where people have been and lessons learned. And, uh, I just happen to have someone that I've reached out to that's done four of these, four counties.
Okay.
And three in Virginia, one in Carolina, and, um, I believe they'd do it for, for no fee, you know, just to sit, just to sit...
I was gonna ask, is this a...
I knew, I knew, I knew, well, I knew we would be concerned about cost, but, you know, sometimes, and, and like I heard you say the other night, if there is a cost to get this fixed along with what we're doing, obviously, you know, we're no extra cost to you, but if we have to have someone in, like an SME from the outside, a subject matter expert from the outside. But I think people that have actually been down that exact piece with the, with the comp board positions, you know, MOA is the solution to the comp board, if, you know, the comp board MOAs, they're out there, they're, they're already in place in different localities, and so it's, uh, this has all been done before. But I think what we just need to do is have one of those people, maybe two at the table, and it might be temporary, it might be like an ad hoc.
Right.
You know, we have someone come in that's, that's from a locality that has done that, that we know, that we feel comfortable with, and, and that can, uh, maybe they just sit in two or three meetings and we take it from there.
Okay.
Um, but certainly keep the local piece in place, right.
Well, and, and not to seem, because the last thing I wanna do is, because like I said, when we first started, everybody in here has their own experiences, everybody in here has their own firsthand knowledge, which makes you, gives the ability at a work session where normally the public is not speaking, the ability to speak. I don't wanna stop anybody from doing that, so what, what I could do is just simply ask if, by, just by a show of hands, if that's, if y'all are comfortable with that, is, is...
Well, I'm, I'm, can I interrupt just one second? I strongly encourage the people that came to listen to us to speak here tonight, because...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I mean, come up to the podium, speak what they got to say, whether they in favor of seeing Notaway County take this over, and if so, why, kinda a brief description.
Sure.
And if they in favor of Notaway County staying out of it, I'd like to know why.
Okay, all right, Buddy, if you don't mind, we'll, uh, I'll open the podium with that.
Yeah, that was my brief, that was my brief for you, but definitely want you all involved, and they have to be. I think from a legal perspective, you know, been through some of this before, and having you do the financial, we, we have to have that financial connection...
Oh, yeah.
Of, of, as we go down it, so thank you.
We got some people know about some money.
I'll yield to whoever wants to talk.
Mr. Chairman, before we, before we start, I'd like to get a point of clarification.
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Toth, I'm just curious, because I'm writing down my notes, when you began talking, you said you're in favor of, ma, depending on, we give Buddy the same tools that we gave...
We don't give Buddy any extra tools.
When you say that, are you talking about extra people?
You, you can defy tools however kind of highway you want to. No, not extra people.
Okay, I, I just, I mean, to be fair, to be fair, I want...
Be fair, because, because here, here's the thing, if you expect me to get work done on a forty-acre field, and you give me a tractor breakdown every thirty minutes, and then you get a man and say, Bo, you ain't doing your job, but has a brand-new one.
Right.
That don't cut the cheese with Bo Toth.
That's right.
But Bo cannot...
I wanna be very fair to the sheriff, I respect the sheriff, I respect his position, I respect every one of the law enforcement officers in this county, and I have actually talked to many of them, and there were some people who seemed to think that it was not gonna change one bit whether the county took it over or not. But if it, if we don't, then we're not trying our part, because we're getting all these complaints all the time, and, and y'all not doing anything, and y'all not doing anything, and y'all not doing anything. But we have been doing something, and we've been doing it for six months, we've had multiple meetings, John.
Yes, sir.
For, for, I know five months, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say six months, we in the, in the twelfth month now, so I know it's been six months.
That's right.
So, but, but yes, I'm saying that giving Buddy the equal tools...
Right.
Or the ability for personnel would be equal to the, what the sheriff had. If we throw Buddy a hundred thousand dollars and say, hey, man, go get you some old people, and that, that, that's a tool, and that, I don't wanna see that happen.
There was a conversation that I had, and it was regard, in regards to dispatcher's experience, and how Notaway historically has been able to keep a dispatcher long enough to train them, and then we gotta train again. And so, I don't know what the solution to that is, whether it's the environment they work in. It's difficult for Notaway to chase salaries, because we just, we just don't have the money that Chesterfield or Henrico has. But if that's the, one of the challenges, Buddy, is that turnover, that, you know, our longest experienced dispatchers right now, I think one or two of them have three years.
Three years, yes, sir.
So, that's, that's one of the challenges.
And if it, and if it is money, they can go by the same budget, cut the number of personnel down, and get better people that's at the console. You know, if you're giving them, if they're giving a hu, five hundred thousand dollars, and that's for eleven people, just for instance, then you need to cut them people back to nine, yeah, they're gonna have to work harder, but they're gonna get paid more money, so that we would be somewhat of equivalent to like Amelia County, Prince Edward County, because it's my understanding that, that those dispatchers start at about ten thousand dollars more than Notaway. So, if they do, while I wanted to work in Notaway for ten thousand dollars, let...
If we move, if we move ten thousand dollars, they're gonna move ten thousand dollars.
That's exactly right, then you chase the salary.
Right. So, that piece of it that I learned from a very experienced person was that the turnover and then the constant training new is, is part of what we see here, and so that's the, a challenge, so...
Well, a big thing too is, I do what I do because I love my... Well, a big thing too is, I do what I do because I love my job. It's, it's not great 365 days a year. And here lately, it has not been great at all with this weather fluctuation. But I love my job. And if you get somebody that's in the console or put that badge on, whether it be a fire department badge or a law, whatever they do, they somewhat have to love their job. And they do to a degree, but not all of them. You know, and that, and so, and if they don't, and that goes back to the $10,000 chasing the salary. I understand fully what you're saying, $10,000 chasing salary, they gonna move up. But if I feel like I get $10,000 more driving an extra 16 miles to work.
Well, is there a possibility? I mean, if, is the county paying for their training when they go to school?
Is it currently doing it?
Is the county paying?
Do they go, I don't even know. Do they go to a, do they go to a 20-week school?
Well, in law, and I know that there's a couple, a deputy and a police officer here. If I remember correctly, if the, like Town of Blackstone, if they pay for the, the school in Lynchburg, the police academy, and that employee, that officer's not there for a certain period of time, he owes, he owes the town the money back.
That's what I was getting ready to say. If you got some.
But I'm not so sure that can be enforced 100%. I know in one instant that the, the police officer quit early, and he didn't have to pay any of the money back to the Town of Blackstone. But it was a court litigation, I think.
I believe comp board money is allowed for training, too.
Okay.
Well, and that was part, one of the things, I think Buddy, once he starts putting his thing together, can figure out, number one, is it legal to put an expectation? If, if we get someone certified, we expect three years out of them, or five years, or whatever it is, to get them trained, certified, we expect that expectation out of them. And if not, they reimburse the county for the training.
And that's one thing we can do, and I will admit, Nottaway is lax on is our personnel system. And when I read all of the information over the last two weeks on EMS, that, that ties in with, most times, the county sheriff follows the procedures of the county. We need to really work on our personnel structure, the, the job descriptions and things like that, which would be good to work with Buddy on. And, and I want people to understand that you know this, but people in the public, this dispatcher isn't just for law enforcement. It just happens to have come under the sheriff. It's the whole blanket of everybody EMS. So I think Buddy being impartial, that is open to all these agencies, would lend a better hand. But, Mr. Toth, I want to ask you if you would be open. We hadn't, we focused six months, but we hadn't really focused on this problem for years. So once Buddy gets into that realm, if it's a pleasure of the board, then if he identifies things that are going, that we haven't identified before, and we, we may have to give him more tools, because nobody asked before, so.
I see that, that's, that's a good point. And on the, on the, on the other side of that, if we, if Buddy does take his thing over, and it's, as, it's the same after a period of time, a year, a year and a half, or if gotten worse, it's a whole lot easier for this board to replace Buddy than it is the sheriff.
Remember that, Buddy.
That's, that's the only thing that I could think of earlier in this process, was the accountability. Constitutional officer versus an employee.
And with us coming in on the, on the opening of a new radio communication system, we're gonna identify things that we're gonna need that we didn't need before.
Well, that's a whole new tool that was coming about anyhow, because we already done that. But I'm talking about if you just give them a, a open checkbook and say, all right, if you need to go up to pay, if you need, if you need better this or better that, or new computers, that, then the sheriff wasn't given the same opportunity. But yes, I do agree with you. He didn't request it to a degree, that's a very good point. But our old sheriff didn't request a whole lot of thing.
Buddy, did your grant book open?
Times have changed a whole lot, you know. I, I was told one time that Larry Parrish gave some county money back instead of giving me a new uniform. And Larry is a great friend of mine, and I got the utmost respect for him. And I wish he'd come work for the county and be in on some committees and stuff. But I pick on him about this still this day. So not, not one of us are perfect. At the end of the day, if y'all guys are trying to fight in a fire or fighting a crime, and you're not giving that communication with dispatch, your life is on the line. The person you're trying to help's life's on the line. And accountability, at the end of the day, that doesn't necessarily lie with the sheriff. It lies with that individual dispatcher. And if that person's not performing and doing their job, then they need to be replaced immediately. Because it was a life in hands at that point.
All right, well, what we do then is, I'll go ahead and, and open the floor up to EMS, fire, rescue, police, anybody who wants to come to this podium right now and speak for or against what the board has discussed here tonight.
Speak your name and your department.
Yes, please.
Speak freely, name's a chance.
And don't be scared.
Be probably not.
I mean, if you're sat, if you're satisfied with what we're fixing to do, so be it.
Joey Shanef, I'm chief of the crew fire department. First of all, I'd like to say we have the utmost respect for sheriff and the deputies. This is not something, you know, it's nobody's blame or anything else. Our only concern is the safety of the citizens of the county and their responders. And that's the only reason we've been pushing for the change. You know, times have changed, you know, these problems have been going on for years. And we want them fixed like y'all do. So we fully support your decision, that's why we've been hounding this for a long time. And I say, everybody's human and mistakes are made. If we don't make plans to change those, then we're at fault. And I say, our concern is our safety and the citizen's safety. But we appreciate your support. We've been a long time coming this way, and we thank you. And like I say, by no means do we want to think that it's, you know, any of the sheriffs or deputies' fault. The calls have increased, what amplifies any problems you have. You know, sometimes they're short-staffed. That's a problem, you saying about, you know, fewer people. You gotta have multiple people on the lines, because you get multiple calls at one time. So you have to watch your staffing issues. But like I said, we appreciate where you at. And, you know, our thinking is, this will relieve the sheriff of the burden of overseeing the dispatch center. So it'll free some time up for him to cover other issues. And this is an emergency service issue, you know, it's all the departments. And we feel like Buddy is more qualified, so he can deal with everything and not just the police side. So that's our feeling also. We appreciate your time.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody else? Please limp forward. Dion, by the way, thank you for your service, brother.
Yeah, certainly. And I will say, I've been battling this for 10 years. So it's just not Sheriff Jones, this, we had this issue under Parrish. We were very fortunate to have some excellent dispatch supervisors that we lost in this whole process too, because of issues within the dispatch system. I will say that the fire study that was done in 2021 said that there needed to be changes within the dispatch center, that there needed to be two on duty 24/7, and that they didn't need to be assigned administrative roles. And that's part of what the problem that we're seeing now. I'm scared that if you don't give Buddy tools, we're gonna fail.
Additional tools, and already over there?
Because that's why we're failing.
Such as, and what, what tools are you speaking of? There's two, there's two dispatch all the time right now, right, Carrie? Two dispatchers there all the time? Okay, okay.
They, they're operating out of an office as big as Steve's.
Well, that, that, that is a chicken household there. I do agree with the, the structure.
And there's no, there's no kind of structure currently. You know, you could have two dispatchers, but I don't expect Buddy Hyde to be there at 2:00 in the morning overseeing these two dispatchers. There needs to be supervision. So it's just not having two dispatchers having a great old time. There needs to be follow-through.
If he can do it within the budget that the sheriff's hard to get, and I'm all, I'm all for it. But to give him additional resources monetary and tell him to get it done, he can get Donald Trump's security team down there if he's got enough money going there.
That's true, but as you said also, it's never been asked before.
Very good point.
He could walk in that door and say, we need this, this, and this to make it work.
I've never heard Buddy Hyde ask for money before.
I've never either. And, you know, there's counties around us that are doing this, that are successful. If you listen to Skinner, Brunswick County, Mecklenburg County, you'll be blown away of how professional they sound compared to what we've been dealing with for decades. And it's nobody's fault except improper, or they get the training, but there's no, accountability might be wrong, but there's no feedback. You need to know how you're doing.
Dispatchers go to that 20-week school here, or they, we train them here?
We train them here, they have to go for.
Eight days.
Eight days, okay.
What are you good 20 weeks?
I read it somewhere.
And out of that budget, you got to remember, the Town of Blackstone does pay $22,000, $23,000 annually.
Because we took their dispatch position.
Correct. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Crew in Burkeville also.
I believe you're correct, yeah.
I believe that it's a per diem or per capita payment that goes to the dispatch center. So everybody.
Blackstone's paying how much, $22,000 a year?
$22,000 a year.
Well, surely they was paying more than that to that dispatcher of 24 hours, seven days a week? We need to have a town with.
They got a heck of a deal.
Great, why you think they gave it up?
I think it saved $120,000.
Saved $120,000?
I think.
Dion, back up now, you said eight days training.
Yeah, it's just for, if I'm not mistaken.
For these people to learn how to save somebody's life.
And that ain't even got to do with dispatching. No, that ain't got to do with dispatch.
Okay, okay.
Basically, when it comes to the academy, you go and they teach you, because there's so many different jurisdictions that go in, and depending on different policies and procedures for that, but how, what they teach you essentially there is how to not get sued and liability, and the basics.
So the teacher that they're getting is given here in the county by a more experienced dispatcher?
On the job training with another dispatcher, so I don't even know if they up the staff and, I'm sure they try to. But if you have two consoles and one is a brand new and one, you really can't.
Are your in-house trainers using the same format? Or is it like, okay, Joe, Susie, Ann, I learned this way, I learned this way, we're just gonna teach you?
Exactly.
So don't you think we need a more focused approach and a standard that everybody can teach the same thing?
And I could tell you, we have a protocol, emergency services spent months developing protocols for dispatch.
Protocols.
And we're still having issues with those protocols being followed. It's no fault, it's a fault of the system, not an individual. The system has failed.
Mr. Thomas, to your point, just, just for, and, and hell, I can remember this one. All right, so when you say in protocol, automatically structure fire, all three departments are toned out automatically.
Correct.
On a brush fire, two departments are toned out. And as I understand it, recently, I believe it was three departments was toned out on a brush fire. And we've had some incidents where wrong department was toned out on the opposite sides of the counties, first due.
Correct. And there was a structure fire in Burkeville that we weren't dispatched until six, eight minutes afterwards. And then we passed Cambridge going to the courthouse versus the other way, because the wrong address was still given to mutual aid companies.
Yeah, I heard a lot about that one.
It's a huge system issue, and Buddy needs the tools to make that work. I think six months, this has been decades, to fix something like this in six months.
We, 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 no, we've been addressing it for six months.
Right.
This new board right here.
To give Buddy six months.
No, I said a year and a half.
Yeah, he's gonna need time.
I said a year and a half.
And I think.
Three times a six-month ban.
I don't know if y'all heard what Mr. Ingram said, but when you were speaking about the structure and making sure everybody's trained the same, Mr. Ingram did speak up, and he said, well, that's what Buddy's for. And I, and I think that's right, one focal point, making sure that any instructors and supervisors are training the same thing. It could, it could come out of a different mouth, but it just needs to come out with the same words, same training, same three.
And I want, as I said in the chief's meeting, Buddy is a doer. He, he says, yes, he'll, he'll do it, he'll make it happen. But we got to remember Buddy was hired for emergency services in Nottaway County. Taking on dispatch is a huge, that is almost a full-time job for an individual. So we still need him for firing EMS throughout the county.
Well, if he gets some good personnel working under him.
100%.
Yeah.
He can oversee, be the liaison, and then hire someone that is a coordinator for the day-to-day operation.
Definitely want you to have an open mind come budget season.
I don't want to get to tools, Ms. Lee. You know, what I'm saying is, we need, out of respect to the sheriff, yes, maybe he didn't request some of the tools. And some, sometimes you request stuff you know you're not gonna get, so there's no need to request.
Correct, correct.
At the end of the day, it falls short of people wanting to learn, people wanting to do the job. As I said, you got to love your job. Each one of them volunteers right there, y'all not only love what you're doing, y'all love helping people. That's why you're doing it.
You have to have that pride in your job.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
You know, no matter how much money you throw at something, you're not gonna retain that person unless they love their job, because they're gonna go for the money.
That's exactly right.
But at the same point, they need to make a living.
They need to make a living, feed their family. The social media man I was speaking of today is Walter Mac Osborn. I saw him in the street today, and I told him how many years of gratitude that I've had for him since I was a little boy, eight years old. He was on the fire department when they put out a bonfire at my, my father's place. And I remember Walter Mac, he's aged a whole lot, and that's been a while ago. But I've had the utmost respect for every volunteer in this county since I was old enough to remember. And I will continue to do that and do all I can to help y'all.
Appreciate it.
And Dion, just to clarify, are you in favor or not in favor?
Oh, I'm definitely in favor, but I, I don't want handcuffs put on Buddy.
It makes, it makes sense. And I, I think to Bo's point, I think Bo is definitely in the right roadway. And, but Bo's got an open mind. It may have seemed pointed, but Bo's very open.
Yeah, I'm very open-minded, and I want to battle the system. But I want to do it with close to the same resources that's been used. You know, Carrie's sitting here, and Deputy Havens sitting here, and they, they can only do what they can do.
100%.
That's all they can do, is what they can do. But they need to do what they can do, and I think, I trust in my heart that both of them two individuals do.
I, I think a lot of the supervision that we lost loved their job here. They were excellent in the job that they had.
We've heard they're saying the same thing.
And it was heartbreaking to see them leave, because they were making change. They were progressive, they saw where we should be, and we lost them.
I, I know what, the few times I've had the pleasure of being around Deputy Havens, I feel like, number one, he loves his job, I feel like he loves Nottaway County. And, and I will say this respectfully, he inherited a mess.
Oh, definitely.
And I don't, and there's times I don't, I feel like talking about handcuffed. And that may be the wrong metaphor here, being him a deputy. But I, I don't know everything that goes on over there either, and I don't want to assume. And I don't, I don't want the public to assume either. But I could just say, he, he's, his heart's in the right place, and what he wants to do for Nottaway County here, he absolutely do. And I feel like he's gonna probably be very valuable moving forward as well.
And he's sadly also doing that in a part-time role.
Correct.
So it's.
On top of his road duties, correct.
Correct. So it's just.
So, yeah, it's, and, and that's the last thing. And, and we've said this from the beginning, and I'll say this to Bo, I, I felt like I might be speaking for you with this as well. But the whole time we're saying, we want this to be a collaborative effort to move forward with everybody hand in hand.
It's really a good time right now, because the new communications, the new towel going on, us recognizing that the chicken house over there ain't cutting it no more. You ain't got enough room to breathe in it. Could you imagine how they were doing COVID up in there?
And I could say they've always requested bigger workspace. That's the one thing I've always, they asked for raises for their dispatchers, they've asked for more dispatchers they've had, and they've asked for more workspace.
Well, they got a new board now, they might get it.
So that's always been requested from the sheriff for, for the dispatch center.
Did anybody have anything else, Mr. Thomas?
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Dion, appreciate it. Anybody else? All right, I got two standing, who's coming? Hey, Carrie.
Hi, Carrie. I am the communications supervisor over at the dispatch center currently, underneath Josh. I took over, I think it was in April, May, I was appointed to the position. I have just a background for a little bit of everybody. I have 25 years of being in a dispatch center. I did 19 and a half with Prince George. Then I came back home, because I wanted to serve back at home. And this is where I grew up. And then I went to Commonwealth Attorney, then I went to Crew PD, and now I'm back at the center. And it is where my heart lies. It took me taking a break to realize that's where my heart lies. I will tell you, just to make a few clarifications. Josh has done an amazing job thus far with what he was handed. The two previous directors did amazing jobs as well. And we are making progress. And we are making progress, is it the progress that we fully want to see? Not always. At this current time, we have two consoles that are fully workable. That have CAD, the radio, phones, everything on them. The supervisor console is a third console, it does not have a radio. So that prevents a third person from being in there, helping. There is a structure system that y'all were talking about earlier as far as personnel and supervisors being on location. Of course, Josh's schedule changes every two weeks, so he rotates between days and midnights. I am there now currently, which I started in November, from two to midnight, various days of the week. So I cover five hours on one shift, five hours on the other shift, and I overlap between both sides, so I am there. We also have two dispatch leads that handle stuff when we are not there. We have also gotten two more people certified as training officers. We are working on getting a training program together. I do have one that I had from Prince George, and I'm working revamping it for Nottaway. So it's not like anything isn't being done to help the training situation. Do we make mistakes? Yes, I'll be the first one to say it. I've been doing it forever, and we all make mistakes. We have been working with Buddy on possibly getting a new EMD program, which is called Power Phone. And that is going to be computer-generated, it'll be for firing EMS. And what happens is, once you put what we call a nature code, which is the call type. So if somebody's having chest pains, it'll be ambulance, chest pains. It'll automatically take you to that EMD card, start at, it has the same questions you input the information. It takes that question and that call and puts it in the call sheet with the timestamp. It'll also go into your pre-arrival protocols and anything that you need to do pertaining to that call. You can link SOPs to it, you can link pretty much anything you want, as far as building plans, anything like that, you can go ahead and put that in. I will tell you, our radio system, which I know we're getting a new one, but at this time, if, say, we are talking, we have an event going on in Crew, one in Burkeville, one in Blackstone, one on Nottaway EMS, Nottaway and Burkeville EMS, and any fire department. If we are talking on one channel, it completely blocks out the other channel, we can't hear it. That creates a problem. You know, we are working with Vesta on our phone system, we have 911 currently on it. We are currently in the middle of updating the non-emergency lines to where they will be also on that system, so we won't have the phone on the desk. And, you know, we are making progress, you know, it's, it's a slow progress. But we are not ignoring situations as far as Josh and I are concerned. Now, I cannot speak for the sheriff because he's not here, and I don't want to put words in his mouth and say stuff that, you know, he doesn't feel is appropriate or in his beliefs. But I can tell you, I know that the guys are frustrated, I was a firefighter, I ran with EMS as well before I got into emergency management and services. So I understand what the guys are saying. And my recommendations have been, you know, when we get a new hire, let's put them out riding. I want them to ride with EMS and go to these calls so they can understand that they are receiving additional fire training now. You know, it's, it's little things like that that I think are helping us progress. Is it completely fixing the problem? No. Do I, I'm, I'll, you know, I respect Buddy, and he knows that, I love working with him. And, you know, whatever the board ultimately decides, I am for, I am one hundred percent with y'all. Do I think taking the same group of people and moving them and putting them in just a different environment is going to fix the situation? No. And that is my personal feeling. So I just wanted to let y'all know that what's going on and what's happening in the center and what we are doing to try to remedy some of the issues that have been going on.
Well, Carrie, I appreciate it, I'm sure the rest of the board appreciates your word tonight because it's not hard, I mean, it's very hard to sit and be a part of something that seems like it's being picked apart or kicked in the teeth and stuff like that, and to stay steadfast. That's why you're perfect for this job, and that's why we love having you.
Well, thank you.
And I appreciate you stepping forward with that and, and your understanding and your patience. And the other thing that I liked that I heard you say tonight is that Buddy's already implementing, trying to make things better. So it almost, for lack of better terms, it seems like the transition could be more, I mean, as close to seamless as possible.
Correct, and, you know, I think once we get, you know, to be perfectly honest, our CAD system is outdated.
What's CAD system stand for, Carrie?
Computer aided dispatch.
Computer aided dispatch? That got anything to do with Buddy with that overlying system you was talking about, putting in that she mentioned?
The mapping system? Yes.
Okay. So that's a new tool that was coming anyway. So y'all made some progress over the last four, five months.
We have.
Made a lot of progress.
We have, and I think between Josh, Buddy and I, we have really, and even the people who come to the fire meetings and all, I think we have been able to work very well together and explain things to each other that may have not been known before on both sides. You know, it's not, you know, I'm not going to sit here and say, okay, I was a firefighter several years ago, I know everything now, because I don't. And I'll be the first one to say that. The same thing with EMS, no, I was not an EMT, no, I was not a paramedic, I just drove for them, you know. So I don't know everything that goes, you know, I know a general little bit about it, but I don't know everything that goes on at every call. You know, I just know.
Now, the high sheriff is here now, and you got your back to him, I just want to let you know he's here.
Oh, that's fine.
That way you don't incriminate yourself.
The sheriff knows that, you know, I fully support him and I back him as well, that's no secret. You know, I've talked with him on several occasions, and he knows this is where my heart lies.
That's what it takes, dedication and where your heart is at.
And that's one of the reasons that I think, and I may be speaking out of turn, but I think that's one of the reasons he put me in the position that I am, is because of my years of experience and knowledge and training and.
Job performance.
You know, that kind of stuff, you know. But like I say, I'm not, I'm not even perfect, you know. Even though I've been doing it all this time, there's still stuff that comes up, then I'm like, I have no idea what to do with that. So I'm not going to sit here and say I know everything because I've always told my trainees, if you have somebody who tells you that, run quickly. So, but, you know, if anything that you need from me, or, you know, Buddy needs from me, or the sheriff needs from me, I am there a hundred and ten percent. And I will do my best to, you know, make it work.
Ms. Chairman, point of clarification, but Carrie, the, you mentioned this is called power phones or something like.
Yes.
I just want to tell y'all, just remind you, the sheriff did request that in the budget last year. And y'all told me to cut the budget, and I cut it, so just know that was like.
He didn't tell you where to cut it.
I made recommendations, you took it. We cut almost five hundred thousand dollars off departments.
We had to.
Because people were saying, you're not cutting department hits, we did cut department hits, so, because you knew you were going to raise taxes. You still had to raise taxes because what do you want to take so much out of the general fund? So I just want you to know. It wasn't Buddy requesting, sheriff won't tell, it was Michelle who requested it. So I'm ninety-nine point nine percent sure that, I got my notes in my office, but anyway.
Yes.
I know what else, I know what else. All right, Mr. Shute, did you have something?
Are you done, Carrie? Thank you, Carrie.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Carrie, I just appreciate your help.
We reap what we sow.
You better believe it.
That's right.
And you have to take the bitter with the sweet.
Well, I voted against it.
Well, I echo a lot of what Dion was talking about, but of course, I retired as a fire chief in June. And I've been pretty quiet, I haven't experienced too many potluck and tried to stir them in Burkeville a little bit. But one thing I wanted to point out, this is a multifaceted problem. It's, you know, I've, I've never been a dispatcher, but I've sent to dispatch centers some, and I've seen a little bit of what goes on in there. And a lot of times that dispatchers don't hear us, or we don't hear dispatchers, a lot of it's because of distractions. I just can't imagine two people sitting in the dispatch center with a rec on three sixty. That phone has got to be ringing just about nonstop. So as, as the young lady there said, simply moving probably won't fix much. You may have better facilities, obviously you're going to get a new communication system that in some ways is going to be better. In some ways, it's going to cause you a lot of headaches. Because it's going to work so much differently than what anybody else is used to in this area. It'll have better coverage, I'm sure, in some ways, other ways, it's going to bring about difficulties. But the training side, you know, I, it really baffles me that the dispatcher only gets eight days of training.
And that don't pertain to actual dispatch.
Exactly. But at the same token, just like, you know, when I was going to the chief's meeting and we worked on those protocols, just like building protocols, all of us in here know, there's nothing worse than a rookie with a radio. So the dispatcher has to deal with the rookie with the radio. And so there needs to be training on all sides. And as far as simply moving, that won't pretty much fix nothing. Taking it out from under the sheriff and putting it under Buddy without changes for growth, won't fix anything either. So I've been, well, we were on thirty-nine five when I got on the fire department before we ever went to anything better. And you could take your handheld and throw it at somebody and get their attention quicker than you could talk to them on the radio. So I just want to put that part in there. It's going to be a whole lot more, just simply moving it, and it'll be a whole lot more on all sides of the system. The dispatchers, the law enforcement folks, the fire folks, and the EMS folks. We have to change the way we use radios. We have other tools that can be advantageous to us, as well as, everybody is trained under NIMS, National Incident Management System. Everybody's trained that way. So if we work in the dispatch centers that way, and we work on the fire grounds, in EMS incidents that way, you'll see your system become what you want it to.
All right, Chief Shute, first, first of all, I understand you had received a commendation for your service, and well deserved, sir. And thank you for everything that you've done over the years. There's been a lot of people, a lot of blood, sweat, and tears out here, and you've put it on probably every road in this county, multiple times. And thank you for everything you've done, sir. And I appreciate your words tonight.
All right, appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Anybody else?
Ladies, gentlemen, members of the board. My name is Andy Agner, I'm a very recent new volunteer, person with Burkeville. I've got thirty-five years fire experience, fire EMS experience, management, whatever. Thirty is a career, the last seventeen was as a fire chief where I directly dealt with dispatch centers, rebuilding CADs, whatever, whatever happened. I, first, I want to point out that that EMD is, is state mandated, it's state law, it was, it was state law. So they were supposed to have it by July first of last year. So it's, it's against, it's what it is. Buddy is, first, I want to talk about the sheriff. I don't want to talk about him.
See how easy it going is?
I want to say, I don't want to talk about him, trust me, I don't want to talk about him. But he, the sheriff has, it's difficult, it's very, very difficult for the sheriff to, to be able to come in and do what needs to be done. He's, I have complete respect for the sheriff and what he does. So I, I just want to say that giving Buddy the ability to move forward with the tools that he needs. Mr. Tuff, I heard you say you don't want to give him any more tools, but, you know, giving him the ability to reprogram that CAD to take.
Well, we can give him some new tools, but keep in mind that a new broom is sweep clean, and you always heard the term that a clean car rides by.
Absolutely.
So, I'm just saying.
I get, I understand. But again, the sheriff asked for that EMD program, and he knew it was state law that he had to have it by July first of last year. So, you know, he's, he's trying, he was trying to at the same time to get what he needed. But when we, when we talk about reprogramming the CAD and doing all this stuff, the CAD system that they use, ID networks, is, when you talk about cars and clean cars, you can clean that thing all you want to, and it's still going to be the worst, the bottom of the line that they will purchase. You can reprogram it to take the ability of the dispatcher to think out of it, where they type in the code, like she was talking about, the nature code. You type in structure fire, it tells you exactly what to dispatch. They push a little green button in there, and it, and it spits out the tone package to tell you who to, who to dispatch. But the other thing is, is, and this is no offense to anybody, but people don't leave jobs. They leave people, they leave their bosses, ultimately, when it comes down to it. Dispatch centers are predominantly law enforcement centric, that's what they know, they do what they know. As a firefighter, I do what I know. Being able to give it to Buddy, he has the ability to broaden that, that focus. And he has the ability to, to be able to have the fire, the EMS, the law enforcement, all three of them across the board, where he doesn't have to worry about all the criminals in the county. He doesn't have to worry about just fire stuff, he doesn't have to worry about just EMS stuff, he can focus across the board and really give you a broad picture of what's really going on within the system. So I, I think that having him be responsible for it with the comprehensive or the whole community approach that he's taking is going to be the best way to do it, because he's going to get the sheriff involved, and the sheriff's going to give you the ability that he had. Hey, this is what I had with, with law enforcement throughout my whole career here, so this is what I need you to focus on for my deputies. Then you're going to have all the volunteer chiefs that are going to be out there that are going to say, this is what we need you to focus on from the fireside. Then you're going to have the EMS stations out there, and the county attorney that's going to make sure that we don't get sued as a county. And the EMS folks are going to say, this is what we need, so he's going to bring that whole approach in and be able to write good SOPs and build that CAD system out like we need it. So having somebody that can give you that broad focus and that broad picture is, is the best thing to be able to do for the county. And being a new person out here, I understand what they're going through. And he's got a tough road ahead, but I've known him long enough to know that he, he's perfectly capable of doing it. Feel bad for the sheriff, because he actually, it sounded like he tried to get some stuff and, and, you know, whatever. Y'all had to make some tough decisions, which I feel even worse for y'all sometimes, having to make those decisions, but. But so just to reiterate, I think, given, letting him do it and run with it, remember Rome wasn't built in a day and we only eat that elephant one bite at a time. So don't expect him to make those changes overnight, because it's not going to happen. My last job, I spent a year and a half rebuilding the dispatch center, and when I retired, it still wasn't where it needed to be. So don't, please don't expect him to be able to be a miracle worker overnight. It's something that's going to take a little while to do. Thank y'all for the time, I greatly appreciate it. I love being out here, I'm having a blast.
Out here, you in the bushes, ain't you?
Well, I'm from, I'm from the bushes, so it's good.
Oh, okay.
He come back to a different set of bushes.
Oh, okay.
I feel like I'm in the, I mean, that's good.
You said, "out here."
Right, right. Y'all have stoplights here compared to where I grew up, though, we didn't have stoplights, and it took thirty minutes to get to the closest store, so.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Anybody else?
One more clarification, as Andy was talking. We do have an EMD program right now, we have an ASCO, but it is not on the computer. You have to actually book cards, and it's a whole lot more strict, and it doesn't, you know, sometimes the cards are just all like this, very difficult to navigate.
Oh, fifty-two card pickup.
That's what it sound like, don't it?
The dispatcher has to get up and go get that book and go to the right pages for that stuff.
Right.
Somebody has to get up and-
Rolodex.
Get to that.
Rolodex, that's what it sound like.
Just as far as with EMD, when you do EMD, you're supposed to have two people in there all the time, period.
Tell him, I'm not going to-
But that's our issue right there.
Yeah.
But I hadn't planned on saying it, but I-
I think everybody made some good points tonight.
Please do, Sheriff, please do, speak.
Yeah, please.
Yes, sir.
Like y'all were talking about earlier, fixing the new car, fixing the car up, it's hard to fix the car while it's going down the road, though. That's the thing we got, that's the issue we have right now. We're steady moving, we're steady working, we're getting the training, we're doing what we have to do, but it is a steady progress, a steady process, because the car is moving. That's kind of the only way I can say that. We're working to do it, I got good people there doing it. And again, like I said, just like the thing with the EMD, if they get a call, and it's a serious call, they got to stop, go get this EMD book, or this A, EMD book, find the page, and then start doing what they do. In the interim, they had to stop doing something else. That's, you know, that's the nature of our beast right now. Now, going down the road further, we are moving toward a new radio system, which I think is a good thing. And let's integrate this in the new radio system, I'm all for that. But right now, just to do it right now, that just can't happen, because it's not going, as a couple of folks have said, it's not going to make it any better right now. We're going to keep doing what we're doing, keep progressing, keep training up, and hopefully by the time it gets to the new radio system, we can work that in. But it's going to get better, not getting worse.
That's what we talked about at the beginning of the meeting, is that there's going to be-
I'm sorry, I missed the beginning, I had-
No, we knew you had your Christmas party. It was mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, because the citizens knew that you had your Christmas party.
Right.
There's going to be a working group established, Buddy's going to start on that, as we progress into this new system. You did say the other night that you thought that was better timing rather than just try to-
Exactly.
And I said earlier that this has got to be planned, it's got to be organized, where's it going, how's it going to work? So I'd like you to be part of that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Is that? Anything else?
Ms. Jones, we appreciate everything you do. And as we said at the beginning of the meeting, we've become aware, I called it a DMA when I worked down there, situational awareness. So now, we are here into it, we are aware. And I believe making this move, because now we're focused on it, before we weren't focused on it. And it's no disrespect to you, sir, at all, I think it will allow you the time to focus on other press and law enforcement matters, too. It's a lot of growth coming, and a lot of things changing, so I just want you to know this is not a personal thing. It's just something that we've looked at and heard, and just, we appreciate what you do.
Well, I appreciate that. Again, like I said, I don't take a lot of things personal, because, like I said, you say things all the time.
You're not against the county taking over the dispatch, though, are you, Sheriff?
Uh, right now, I am, yeah.
But I'm talking about as we progress forward to this-
Like I said, this radio system is probably two years away right now, and we had, talking about plans going in another building.
So, but, so if we slowly do this over the next two to six months, you wouldn't be in favor of it?
Two to six months? I, it's going to take a whole lot of serious planning there.
Well, it's like you said, you trying to fix a moving car.
Yeah.
It's like milking cows in a burnout building, you got to still milk the cows, but you trying to rebuild the building at the same time.
True. I just, for some, I just don't see that happening in two to six months. Again, the new center has to set up, has to get operational, has to have people in there. There's a whole lot of things that have to be taken care of when that new center takes over.
Yeah, and that's what part of that working group would definitely be doing. I mean, I know that there may be, and we, this came up in the chiefs meeting the other night, that there may be a want to expedite it. But we don't want to do anything knee jerk and have to back up while anything is proceeding forward. That's part of the working committee that we were talking about, and as Bill said, I think everybody would definitely appreciate your input, as well as anybody else that Buddy's going to put on there, in that committee moving forward. And that's when you, once you get that plan down, that's when you get that realization of a real timeframe. And then you can still be implementing improvements as we're moving along. Yeah.
Well, if you can lessen my life and getting some burdens off of me, I would appreciate it. But at the same time, if I had somebody to do it because they was undermining me, I'd have a problem with it. So the sheriff has got a, first off, I don't know, the, I don't know how many sheriffs have been in Notaway County since Notaway County was here, but I know in my lifetime, the sheriff has always took over and oversaw dispatch. But I also know that the sheriff's responsibilities and people's rights are growing, seems like daily. So that obligates a whole lot of his time, and I think it would help him in a tremendous way with one less responsibility and one less headache. Because really, it's not one less headache. As he said, you two people in there, they ran that twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. If somebody wants to, I don't know how the law reads on that, but I know if you're working somebody in the public, you got to give them a break every so many hours. So if that person's got to go to the restroom, or whatever, then that leaves one in there. And all that sees, people have to have oversight, and it's difficult, it's hard.
We talk about getting people in training, stuff like that. Again, if you ain't got enough staff, you really can't do that. And that's another big thing. Two people in there all the time, plus having enough people that you can set up training, send them to training, and get them trained. And that's one thing I've been working on ever since I've been in here, trying to get more dispatchers in there, set up the third console, we still ain't finished with it yet, but we've set up a third console, just to try to get more people in there. My ultimate dream is three people in there all the time. But it's hard to keep one person in there right now.
Do you get any complaints, Sheriff, individually, on dispatching issues, like we do?
I get some, I get some. I've been touching, last week, anyway, I've been touching base with the fire chiefs, just touching base with them, see what's going on. So I can get a person. Josh and Kerry, they handle most of the stuff, they've been doing a great job. All my dispatchers do a great job. But again, like I said, I'm touching base with the chiefs now, just to see exactly what is happening. I can pretty much get a call, look at the call, and see exactly what happened. And we figure it out that way. Because again, none of us are perfect.
No, we all human.
Everybody can always, Monday night quarterback, we're not better than Sunday.
War over the dam.
Mr. Chairman, excuse my ignorance, and I know, Carrie, you tried to explain this to me, because I'm getting ready for the budget, I know what's coming. And the state law that Andy had mentioned, the EMD, is the power phone, is that part of the EMD? I don't understand, what's the difference in the power, what are we, what's coming at the next budget? What's coming at the next budget?
Basically, like she said earlier, the power phone, basically, instead of having to stop, do what they do, go get the little book-
So that will, that will help from not getting that book, is what you're saying? Okay, okay, I got it now, I got it, okay. I think it was like a hundred and twenty-five thousand or something like that, I can't remember.
Everything we've been trying to do is expensive.
Right.
Do anything cheap.
Okay.
And last year, again, like I said, we had an interesting budget.
Ms. Jones, I want to apologize to you, because Mr. Ingram and I were on that finance committee, and we were unaware how instrumental this, that was to you. So we will take another vote.
I don't think any of us knew that.
Well, again, again, we made it through that time.
It sounds like the sheriff needs a lobbyist.
Again, we made it through that budget cycle. We did, the board did what it had to do, we all did what we had to do, we made it through that budget cycle. We're here, and we're going to continue to work forward.
And I can say this, through the whole course of this conversation, it's been a, it's wanting to work together, at least that's the common thing.
Oh, absolutely.
Because the last thing any of us wanted was a fracture in any part of EMS.
That's exactly right.
So-
I think the tone tonight is indicative of us working together.
I didn't hear the whole meeting, but I heard a couple of folks speak, and again, everybody, I think, seems to understand that we do have a lot going on. A lot of new things is coming down the pipe, they cost money, and we can't get them all the time, that's just the way it is. Again, like I said, a lot of new things coming down the pipe, and we're working toward that, we are changing, we're adapting, and it's something we're learning and doing, almost different every day.
If it was said to you, Sheriff, because it's been said to me, both a timeframe of March the fifteenth, would that be disrespectful, even in the current facility, for you to hand it over and say, okay, Buddy, you want to oversee it, this is your department, I'm going to knock yourself out, old boy?
That would make me really happy, probably.
That's what I was thinking, because it wouldn't be me, me and you riding around having a little party.
Citizens here and there.
I understand, and you should be. But the citizens is on our behinds, because they listening to these scanners. And they saying, man, and I even had a longtime fire friend of mine from another county call me, and he said that y'all are starting to become the laughing stock. I said, well, somebody got to be, I've been one all my life. But that's what he said, he said, y'all's dispatch, and he come from a county that's not as productive as Notaway County, really. In my opinion, they grow a lot of broomstrow over there.
Did he give any, what can I say? Any instances?
Yeah, he gave a couple, well, he gave one instance when Dick's brother's house burned. He gave that one, but that's a mistake that can happen. It's unfortunate that it happens to anybody. Praise the Lord that his brother was okay. But he said the clarification and the voice, he cannot understand.
Well, again, a lot of that-
But I've been on the phone, I've been on the phone up there before, and I can't understand, they said, who this is? And they think I said Mobo. So is that the phone, or is that the person I'm talking to, or is it me? Or all three?
Probably all three.
Maybe. But I would just ask, would you take it disrespectful if the board decided and said, Buddy's going, with your blessing, Sheriff, so no disrespect to you, do it March, I'm just throwing a number at you, June the first?
Well, I work, the board is, can do what they want to do. I do whatever I have to do, whatever the board decide, I work within those parameters.
Okay.
But again, March first, I just-
I'm just throwing that, I said June first, March first?
We got to take the props away from him up here, anyway.
We need to, like I said, work on a real good plan, transition plan.
Well, as Carrie said, it sounds like a whole lot has been done there just in the last few months.
It is.
A whole lot.
It is, it always, I mean, it's always constantly evolving, that's what I say about it.
Well, Buddy, you missed this part. I said, if Buddy did get it, and about a year and a half went by, and it didn't make a huge improvement, we still got the complaint, we can replace him. We can't replace you.
Now, that's the second time you've said that tonight, you fixing to make this a hostile working environment.
The only way that could be done is in four, three more years, because that's how you got the position you got. And we're not looking to do that, Sheriff. Nor are we looking to do that to you, Buddy. We respect and appreciate both of y'all.
All right, well, if we're good now, y'all, I know a lot of people away from their families here, and it's close to the holidays and everything.
Somebody turned the air conditioner on, they trying to get us out of here, and I'm ready.
Yeah.
I'm sure you got some stuff on your agenda here, buddy.
Yeah, yeah, so if, unless you had anything else, Sheriff? All right, well, it sounds good, it sounds like we're, it's, we're in a combined peaceful forward-thinking, moving direction, and I hope let's keep that like that. Mr. Jones, yes, sir? I'm sorry, different Jones.
I'm a firefighter also, but I come tonight on a different issue.
Okay.
I want to speak for a voice for all three tow companies on rotation. A lot of times I listen to the scanner, and we're here next on rotation, and it's the same company back to back. I would like to know the issue, why it's the same company back to back, it should be a fail, a lot of us depend on that to eat. I'm a part-time tow truck driver, and our future, hopefully in the future, be on the rotation list. A lot of us depend on that to eat, whether it be a DUI, abandoned vehicle, a car wreck. I mean, it shouldn't be going to the same company back to back. I would like more versatility, because there's been times in the system where a lot of companies have not been returned to service, and they keep getting skipped over. And so the same person gets a call over and over, or two people get the same call, get a call versus you leaving one out, not eating. A lot of us depend on that to bring revenue to the county as tax base. I mean, I would like better, more representation for the tow companies to dispatch, not just beating up on fire and EMS side, but I want to speak on the tow side.
Okay, all right, we'll see about-
Are y'all familiar with what he's speaking of? What he's talking about is rotational, it's supposed to be rotational, and I think that's state mandated, didn't the sheriff? The state takes-
State police has one, and the sheriff has their own list.
Oh, okay. So you have your list, and so does the state?
I live John County. So I'm sure there has been some mistakes made as far as the tow rotation in our CAD system, and this was just brought to light about a month or so ago. When they're cleared from a call, they're supposed to be, and it's not going to make any sense to y'all, but marked available, not clear. If you clear them, that essentially takes them off duty. And we don't see that immediately, unless we go deep, digging deep in the CAD system to actually see that. We know why that's happening, we've addressed that, so hopefully that will not happen anymore. I don't know if, I told this to a couple of tow companies, we have our own tow rotation, state police has their own tow rotation. We make all watch towing in our next rotation for a wreck. The very next wreck we get, if we handle that wreck, talking about the county, if the county handles that wreck and watches our next rotation, they get the call.
Right.
We get another wreck, and state police handles it, and if watches it there on their rotation, they're going to get that call, too.
So I'm aware of that, I'm talking about two county rotations back to back.
Yeah.
I'm aware that state is a whole different state.
Yeah, you might, I'm just, for everybody to know. So it's our rotation, state rotation.
Okay.
So we've addressed the situation with the CAD issue. So, I talked to you in this morning, so I think-
Yeah, I'm representing all the counties.
Right, so we're going, hopefully I squared that away.
Okay, all right, good.
And there also are times where we call one rotation, they're not available, we'll go to the next, they're not available, then we'll go to the next, they're not available. We have three regular rotations-
Okay.
-in the county. And so then that starts the process all over again.
Okay.
So there's a lot on the backside that isn't seen by the normal public.
Okay, all right, yeah, it seems like y'all are working towards, or may have already remedied that. All right, so we're going to go ahead and move on, Mr. Bowen, to the courthouse committee. And thank y'all, by the way, for coming out here and sharing with us, and in an open format, and it's, a lot of times, you know, things happen behind the scenes, and it's not that anybody's hiding anything, the meetings are public, chiefs meetings are public, the meetings that we've had, the phone calls that we've got, and we've spoken openly about it, nobody has tried to sweep anything under the rug. No one has tried to buffer, cover, or otherwise, it's just, it's finally, what needs to be talked about is being openly talked about and solutions being made. So again, thank you all for coming, and of course, you're more than welcome to stay as long as you like. But Mr. Bowen, if you could go ahead to the courthouse committee?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we'll try to tie these with two things here. If you don't mind a little leeway, so the board organizational meeting date is set for January seventh at noon at the EOC, okay? I need y'all to be thinking about the courthouse committee, that's why that's on now.
Yes, sir.
That's going to be, and so one of the board members had requested us to kind of give you a list of the committees and what y'all need to form, so we're going to try to get that list to you pretty soon. But a courthouse committee would be something we didn't have last year.
All right.
Also, on the courthouse committee, concerning the courthouse, we, Mr. Elder, Gary Elder, has requested that we go in closed session at the next board meeting to have more discussions about some paperwork that we received just recently.
Okay, so yeah, just put that on a closed session-
Okay.
-when we get done with the-
The-
...burn all that.
Okay, the other thing to get you prepared, so that's done, board organization, we can go to seven. The TRC landfill, and that's, that's about the valuation that you received, I don't remember, but he came to the board, so we're going to have to decide with the, you know, it was like three different choices there of what we wanted to do. Um, and really get, get down to the, I guess, the, where the rubble meets the road, or what should we doing, be doing the next, the next year or two?
It's really four things, when you and I discussed the fact that their cells aren't all full.
Right.
And the ability to take more trash would, would stop the bleeding.
Right.
So we, that needs to be talked about too, if that's something that.
Right, if you remember, it was option one, you're, you're correct, Mr., uh, uh, Mr. Collins, keep the landfill operating. Um, option two, sell or lease the landfill, option three, close the landfill, outsourced waste disposal. And, uh, with, with that oper, option one, keep the landfill operating, that would be part of that one. That, it, to do it, you would have to.
Have to receive trash.
You have to receive more trash, it's, 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 it's pretty much.
Clean trash.
Number is a hundred, you remember that, clean trash.
Then with it.
So, so I just wanted you to know that that's, make sure that, is that the next step y'all are looking for?
Yeah, as long as, as long as in that conversation, if we can get those side by side comparison numbers that we were looking for, it's like the current cost compared to the transfer station current cost and that amount of savings. And then of course, looking back, like, uh, Mr. Collins is saying, we can, if, if we can still outsource, whether it means continuing to use the current sale and the, uh, last one available to supplement, maybe get these taxes to order, pay for some of these, uh, projects, you know?
From what Steve said, was it all, was it four cells that, and they're not all filled?
They're not all filled, that's right.
Then you go back and add.
So, so part of that, you know, I need to bring Gary and, um, Gary adjusted in, part of that is hand, hiring a land, um, a, a land surveyor to show how much height we got left. So that's, that's something that Gary said we, we gonna, we gonna need to do. The other part of that equation is, do we, should we invest, should we invest in a, if we gonna do that and we gonna, and, cause we got, um, and I'm gonna show you, show you, show you some numbers, so it's, it's looking like, that's gonna be in your, just some of the stuff's gonna be in your board package. It's looking like that, uh, cell number five, it goes to twenty twenty-seven, cell number six, it's got ten, ten years. So, wha, what, what we can't do is we, we know that retaining pond, that's why I say we gotta get really into deep discussions. That retaining pond is not gonna hold another cell, as I said, leachate is costing us so much money. So what if we?
I believe it was designed to have second ponds.
Right.
Already, but the previous administrations chose not to.
So, right, and so, and that's what Gary was saying too, so it looks like, do we wanna invest? I think he said, they said somewhere, oh, a hundred something, and that's true numbers, I know you're looking for true numbers. It's, it's a hundred thousand dollars to take the existing pond and building it up and put another membrane. That's, that's, that's a choice you, you can do, and, um, anyway, so.
Or build another pond.
Or build another pond.
Building the pond up is really hard to figure out what you're gonna do with the water in there while you're building on it.
Right, right, um.
But the, I believe the operating loss was four, negative four hundred thousand dollars. So that's our, our goal is to at least get that to zero.
So.
Maybe making some.
All right, so, but, but on that report when he came, and this is what, John, I'll make sure we're looking for the right thing. He put in there about how much money it would cost to construct a building, one point five, between nine hundred to one point five. That's not what you're looking for, no, like the.
Yeah, it is, and, yeah, that's what he's looking for. He said in, in his, uh, what's the term?
The comparison, yeah.
Yeah, that's what he's, that aside, that's what you said, right?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, but I mean, I, I don't, I, I, every time I call these folks, they, it's costing me money, cause I mean.
You should've called me, I could've told you nine to one point five.
So we talked about it, so the landfill loses money because there's fixed costs.
Mm-hmm.
Machines we rent, the people, the fuel.
Yep.
So, John is curious as to what the fixed costs are on the tipping station to operate that.
No words, it costs this much right now to operate what we got? It costs this much to go to the tipping station?
And on the same line, have how much it costs us to go to the tipping station, like the figure he just said.
Right.
So that's the one piece, but then it's the operation.
Are we negative five hundred on the tipping station, or are we negative?
The daily operational expense.
Yeah, are we zero, yeah. And then another thing is, you know, there was also the options of the, the, the plot, the other pros to leaving the, uh, other cell there empty, in case of like a ma, major disaster, hurricane, tornado, something like that, where we could set the brush and debris and everything, that they could get it broke down. But once you start putting that stuff in that sale, then all of a sudden you have nowhere to store that.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so there, so there was plus and minuses to it all, I just, and I think if y'all may remember, I asked one question, are we going to save money by going to tipping station? And the gentleman was like, absolutely, we don't have the number that you're looking for. That's what I want. What's the number of savings? Because could, could it come out that this pays for our?
That's gonna factor into all these projects when we do, and John, you always say it's like molasses, let's trade the ma, molasses for syrup.
Yeah, yeah, at least get the flame out of that molasses, make it move a little faster.
This has really been, we, we've accomplished a lot this year, this one's just kinda show up every three, three months.
Yep, kinda sweep it, sweep it.
Or it could be a major saving, so I, I think.
Yeah, it's very important.
Yeah, we need to really kinda put it on the radar here.
I mean, can we put this something like as continuing business on the agenda? So we can, and then two in that line, could we put this dispatch issue on continuing business so that?
Old business?
Old business, so that we can bring it up if we need to be, or if somebody has a concern, we can bring it up because of our protocol change. It'll be on our agenda each month.
Right, we, uh, we, and, um, Andrea and I met this morning and, uh, and talked, this evening, actually talked this evening. Uh, we did, we did put the animal shelter, we added on, cause the animal shelter's always been on unfinished business. Um, today we added on the radios system, so, cause you need to know some of the things that's happening with that. And so now I hear you saying the dispatch system, dispatch, uh, program or whatever, um.
And landfill.
And landfill, okay?
Hopefully, hopefully you get some stuff on, uh.
About the internet?
Yeah, bright speed.
Oh, Rivers, Rivers.
Oh, yeah.
Riverspeed, River, whatever.
River Street.
My wife is buying, uh, Elon Musk. I said, well, we're getting this thing, and she said, I haven't seen it. So she's getting a Starlink.
Getting a who?
Starlink.
What's a Starlink?
Okay.
Elon Musk.
Satellite.
John, Mr. Chairman.
Were you TV or what?
Speaking of changes.
Oh, internet.
Jumping the gun, but.
You never seen him in the sky?
Going and falling.
That ain't what New Jersey looking at up there.
One second, Miss Norton, let, let, we stopped the cross chatting, just saying, all right, who wants the flow? I know Miss Norton does.
I'm sorry, you got the flow, Miss Norton.
When it comes to committee reports, can you go ahead? We don't list all the committees, a lot of us are on committees unless we happen to mention it. If we put it on our agenda, even if we don't have nothing, we can say, okay, cause I know like steps or whatever we're on. A lot of P, P. Montsenor, we spend a lot of time going to meetings and we don't really have opportunity to say what's going on.
Well, that's, they're putting the list together, so then we'll just add that.
Add it.
Where the jail, like when they asked me about the jail.
Right.
Yeah.
They can ask you about.
Are the departmental reports, we can just continue on it, just either make a committee reports or just make it part of the departmental reports moving forward. Uh, as soon as we get that list and then probably which would start, well, maybe the January meeting then.
So, when I, so I need to contact TRC again, just so you know that, and he'll have to give me a, you know, he, they, they work about an hour, so.
All right, all right, if you want to, and I mean, just to make sure it's like this short part of this conversation here. And I mean, I know we throw a lot at you Steve.
No, no, that's all right, I'm, I get it.
And we appreciate it, but it's like, even if we need to go back and, um, make sure we narrow their focus down to exactly those numbers we're looking for. I mean, we can always go back to the tape if we need to do that.
I got you, I got you. Um, so you, since you didn't mention River Street, uh, Mr. Ingram, um, Watson Erby called me this evening, we had a good conversation. I'm meeting with him Monday at ten o'clock. Um, he's, he wants to give us a proposal, uh, if, but I gotta, I gotta get out the contract, you know, I don't know how to get out the contract. He says, well, they've already, um, they have not honored the contract thus far Steve, so him and I are going to meet Monday at ten o'clock. Um, he, uh, he says he's, he's got a proposal for us that we can get out the contract, that he could save us over five hundred thousand dollars with ARPA funds. Um, I, I think that's worth listening.
Yes.
Amen.
So, but anyway, so I'm gonna be with him Monday and so, so look at, look for him to be at the work session in January, okay?
Sure.
And he's already.
We've got a date here coming up, don't we?
I thought the ARPA funds were supposed to be spent designated by the end of December.
It is, to, to, it, it's gotta be in the portal to, for, uh, broadband. If, it, it, it didn't tell me, I gotta send it to River Street.
Okay.
Okay. Right, I can write, right, 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 right. I, I designated forty some thousand for, um, uh, uh, mold and mildew remediation for the, the, here. Uh, it didn't tell me what contract I sent it to.
And just so the citizens are aware, that money is still here, it has never gone to River Street.
That's right.
Right, some, some of it has, some of it has come out as they did the engineering have, but not much. It's not, very little, very little. Nothing real like a million dollars anyway.
Yeah, so one year you have to appropriate, next one you have to allocate or, or vice versa and on, on those deadlines.
So, and then with that, uh, on just, just preparing for the board package and will be done, um, that you'll see something, a memorandum of, um, agreement with the, uh, town of Blackstone, um, I've got, I just sent it to Gary to data review. Um, and then also, uh, which is, it's, it's pretty cut and dry, we had to, I had to send it to the insurance company to find out, is this verbiage about the insurance, and, and that's in like sections two, six, I think it was. Um, and, and so Susan has helped me with that. Um, you will see in your board package this time too, it's steps, um, the homeless shelter. I know I got a lot of criticism as a board member that I, that I paid, I didn't, um, uh, that we didn't get approved seventy-five thousand dollars. I didn't ask for seventy-five thousand dollars, I asked it to be earmarked in the portal. Um, so, but anyway, so you have to vote on that seventy-five thousand dollars. I did call Sharon because I knew they got a pushback in, in Prince Edward about that, and she said it's on. And, um, Lunenburg has auto wrote the check. And, um, I said, okay. Um, so that's in your board package, and if you got any questions, you can call Sharon or me and we, we'll get that answer to you. The SRO grant come back up again, Michelle called me, we gotta make a decision. Um, I think we, you know, the SRO, the SRO grant, the, the, uh, the school system has not said they would help with that right now. They said they got other, uh, uh, big projects that.
I thought they said they would help with it.
They, they helped this fiscal year, they did pay that, this is a new grant.
Okay.
All right, so yes, they, they've done their part this year.
Okay.
Um, I'm, I'm hoping they will help next year, you know, but I, the next fiscal year, let me say that, Bo. Um, but anyway, um, uh, according to what the sheriff reported, gave him, and Sheriff, you can speak up. I mean, he's gonna have to get a vehicle for him, so it, you know, as a board member right now, with the, with the funds we got going and priorities, and I know it's, and I know I gotta be careful, it's not gonna, never be enough SRO officers, I know that, and he has, and he's making, he's juggling people the way he can, but I'd tell you, you know, he, Sheriff to say, but, and Sheriff and I had not talked about this, but I, right now financially, I don't know if we would, I would recommend it, but that's just me, but anyway. Sheriff, you got something, I, I'm going by finance, you go by safety, and I understand that.
Well, I'm always going, I always ask anyway.
Right.
Again, like I said, budget, budget cycle last year, I know y'all had to do what you had to do, y'all in there to mess last year.
But you have a SRO also in, in each school, but if somebody calls in, that's, that's where your problem is.
Again, just like any other staff, and somebody calls in though, nobody's at that school.
So then you gotta pull a road deputy and tell him go by there, then you pull him off the road.
Yeah, they check in on the school, or either if something happens at that school, SRO has to leave the other school and go down there and handle it.
Hmm.
That's the way it's going right now. So if somebody takes a day off, one of the schools is gonna be without an SRO. Um, and that's who we're trying to avoid, just trying to help it out a little bit. And plus, my sergeant at the high school, um, he pretty much handles the SROs. If something happens at another school, he'll go down there and help them investigate, that kinda stuff. And the high school probably ought to have two SROs in there, cause the high school is basically a small city. It's a small city, you got all kinds.
Full of testosterone.
Yeah, you got all kinds.
I know all about it.
Heard you can get coffee there now, I need to go by there and get some.
I've been aiming on going by there and I ain't been yet.
But we, we probably, well, I definitely want another one in the high school. But again, like I said, I know y'all got to work, we got to work through it, cause it got to be paid for, you can't go up there free.
Might be a volunteer.
Well, if you can find one, let me know.
Deputize John, send him up out.
I'll volunteer, anything to help.
But anyway.
I was SRO there for a long time.
I know you were, but, but look at your board package, you're gonna have to make a decision on that, so, anyway.
Okay.
And, um, last thing, uh, Ms. Norton has reserved, uh, RSVP, uh, for South Savage Indian Community College Fall Community Meeting, which is December seventeenth, and, um, anyway, if y'all want to, if you want to reserve, please call me tomorrow or something, let me know, we'll get your name in the hat.
That's on a Tuesday, correct?
I don't have it counted in front of me, I can't even remember.
I got it, hang on.
But it sounds right, John, for some reason.
Yes.
That is a Tuesday?
It's Tuesday.
You know, something else we might consider putting in there too, uh, Steve, we gotta do something with this plat for, for TJ Oliver in that piece of land out there. And I realize there's some court litigation going, coming forward, but it, it keeps continually being pushed and pushed, and that's in April. It was my understanding, neither one of the attorneys for the, for the, uh, for the county nor for the petitioner showed up to this court date. Mr. Oliver was there, didn't see anybody, got there early, and then he was told that, uh, by the attorney, he said, I'm sorry, I missed you, the attorney told him. He said, you didn't miss me, I was there, you didn't come. He said, oh, but I had already taken care of that. He said, well, why did the judge issue a show call for you then? It's a lot of gray area there, and I think this man, what he, what he initially tried to do or was gonna do was, is borrow some money for his business and the lender wouldn't lend the money because there was, uh, an issue with the plat.
That's right.
So now that's put him off.
Right.
Of being able to attain the money. If that was money, operational money, which it could've been on new business, I'm not sure, it could put him in one heck of a bind. We need to, we need to get, we need to get him going on that.
Yeah.
I don't feel like that's been, I think Zodi can, can help out a whole lot with that.
All right, so, um, just so you know, that when, when we, when Gary Elder became our, uh, county attorney, Gary and I went through projects, you know, that what's, what's on and what's not. And since that, that case was already going and.
Right, I remember talking to Gary about it.
Sands Anderson, um, I guess I need to either get Zodi, maybe, and get, I, I, let me work on that Bo, I gotta figure out how to do that. TJ Oliver was actually in your packages this month, uh, Judge Feely has appointed him as board of elections, so. Um, so anyway, you'll, you'll see that in your board package too, but I will, um, I try to figure out how we, I can help strategize that and solve that. I got you, I hear you sir.
That's just like the landfill, that, we've been a year and haven't accomplished anything.
Right.
But could you imagine trying to get a loan for your business and you being held up because you legitimately thought you bought something?
You would already bought the cows, not realizing you didn't have.
Yeah, I'd have called the bank and said, hey, I wrote the check, I need you to put the money in my checking account. And if you decide, I don't know if I can do that, I'll say I might clean my pistol up, no.
Oh, no, all right, Mr. Collins.
I'd have done it ass back with Bill.
Comments from Mr. Collins?
Um, yeah, I, I've, I've got a compliment, comment and some compliments for our citizens, our EMS, our fire, our sheriff. Um, this year's been a lot of challenges, but most of the time I could figure out, you know, I could, I could do some reading, or I could talk to John or Steve. I could figure out, okay, here's our solution. And this problem with, with EMS and dispatch, dispatching and, and, you know, people's lives, but it's also expensive. And it's, you know, people that are very important and, and, and professionals have been doing it for thirty-five and forty years. So, this was two different meetings that I've been in just in the last ten days. And like I said, every time I saw somebody, I was in the hardware store this morning talking to, to some folks. Through those conversations, we were able to try to figure out a way forward and to keep our citizens safe. So I wanna compliment our citizens and our volunteers for helping me to try to get my hands around it.
And, and let me piggyback on some of that with, Mr. Collins, if you don't mind. Um, I said this to a couple people and I heard it tonight, they said, um, everybody makes mistakes. Steve Bowen can make mistakes, but I can hide them from you. Those dispatchers, they don't have that luxury. Everybody's listening. And so that's, that's, that's hard anyway, and I, and I, and I, and I hope, I hope dispatchers aren't listening to this going, well, they don't think, they don't, we don't respect them. I think we all do, I just wanna make sure we clarify that.
Absolutely.
Very difficult.
Doing the best they can.
It's a tech of a job.
Right. But it's, it's like anything. We can all get better at our jobs. I can, we all can. So anyway, but I just want to, I want to say that it's, it's, that, that, their, their mistakes really just show anyway.
Yeah, it's broadcast.
Right, broadcast. That's right.
Mr. Ingram?
Well, I, you know, I've had personal experience with that. And it was amazing to me. And I won't go into the whole story, but I did not know the house was on fire. I called to report somebody driving down my driveway, two tenths of a mile off the road, blowing their horn. I had no idea. It's just 12:30 at night. I had no idea where they blowing my horn. So I called 911 to say, hey, somebody's coming down my road blowing their horn. I don't know who they are. I'd gotten my shotgun out. And in the background, I could hear the other dispatcher saying, house fire 5395 West Court House Road. And I went, oh my God. That's the next door. And I didn't even know it. That's when I got in the truck and went over there. And by the time I got over there, you know, folks were there and, and, and my brother sitting in the truck in the field. And so I know it's difficult. And I know what those, like I told them tonight. You get up at 12:30 in the morning, go answer a fire call to somebody's house or somebody's sick or whatever. And you, you take it upon yourself to get up out of your bed and go help somebody else. What else could you ask for?
You're right.
And I, to me, I want to make sure that they get what they need.
Every resource they need.
They need to have what they need. And we need to make sure they get what they need. Fire departments, EMS, sheriff, all of them. They need to, they, we need, that's just, that's the people that live in our county that we're trying to take care of. And we need to make sure that we do take care of them.
Amen. All right. Mr. Toad?
Uh, I ain't got no whole lot to say. I think I said more than I should have tonight on a few different issues. So I ain't got no whole lot to say. I just look forward to working together with the board members. I look forward to working with the sheriff on the, on the dispatch, uh, going forward, as well as the new communications that we got coming. The tower and the new, I think all that's going to be a big plus. It should be. It come at one heck of a expense. Um, looking forward to, to challenges, landfill and, and getting that bleed stopped. See if we can better do that. I still uncertain about clean trash. I thought trash was trash. But, uh.
Oh, no, it's a big difference.
Yeah, I know. Yeah. Especially when you get into, in the politic part of it. It is a heck of a big difference. Exactly right. You tote clean trash or dirty trash. That's all I'm going to say. I look forward to working with y'all. And, uh, we got a board meeting next week. But if the Lord willing, I'll be here. And if I'm not, I hope each and every one of y'all have a very merry, blessed Christmas.
Amen. Thank you, bro.
Amen, bro.
Ms. Norton?
Uh, just want to say how proud I am of everybody that we have handled this situation in a professional way. We did all the boxes. We checked with our attorney. But most of all, we listened to our citizens and we've listened to our emergency services. And we've listened to the subject matter experts. And we put more of a focus, I think, than any other group has before us on the challenge of listening to the people. And we are going about this in the way we, we should go about it methodically, without making a rash decision. And our point of clarification too is Mr. Ingram has mentioned his fire because he lived that. This board did not make these actions because of what happened to him. I've heard that. And that is nothing farther than the truth. We have identified situational awareness. We can be where we are without these people that protect us. I mean, my, we use it. They saved my husband's life when he had a heart attack. John Sheep was there, kept me from strangling the people that wanted to send him the wrong direction. But these people keep us safe every day. And that's our job to see it's done right. And I'm proud of you that we have approached this in the manner we have. Uh, Mr. Bowen, your plate's full. We're looking at this landfill. Like I said, let's move it from a molasses to syrup. Let's, let's rock and roll, get it done. I can't believe a year has gone by so quick.
It was a dream.
We got a lot, a lot ahead of us, but I think we have started to possibly earn the respect of the people we represent and the way we have handled ourselves. So, um, thank you. Look forward to seeing you at the next meeting and Merry Christmas if I get hit by a bus like, you know.
Well, uh, again, and, and I've said this, and it's like, um, I, I'm proud to be a part of a team that's proactive, moving forward and wants to do it the right way and for the right reasons. And with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
So be it.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by standing up.